You can go ahead.
She's stubborn.
Who thought you'd ever hear that sentence?
We're live.
No, seven three.
Live.
Good, right?
Good evening. At six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order for the City of Rochelle regular city council meeting for Monday, November twenty-fourth. Please rise for the pledge or mean standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight for the Rochelle City Council meeting, we pause to thank you for the many blessings that we've received. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in our decisions and discussions so that we may serve our community with integrity and compassion. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, let us reflect on the gratitude we have for our families, our friends, and the opportunities to make a positive impact in Rochelle. May this season inspire us to cherish the moments we have and spread kindness throughout our city. We extend our heartfelt Thanksgiving wishes to all the staff and the employees who work tirelessly to support our community. Bless them with peace, joy, and safety during this holiday season. In your name we pray, amen. Roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Artiaga is absent. Councilor Valdivieso?
Here.
Councilor Hayes?
Here.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Here.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Here.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Here.
And Mayor Barrows.
Here.
Six present, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Rose. Do we have any proclamations tonight?
No.
Just under the mayor's report, I once again want to thank all of our staff and employees and city council members, fellow council members, for all that they do throughout the year. We can be very thankful that this community has been able to do what it's been able to do since we've been here and before. But also, a happy Thanksgiving to all of our staff and employees and management. We really appreciate everything everybody does all year long. And if you're traveling, be safe. If you're not traveling, still be safe. That's all I have. Council members, anything? Nope, nothing? All right. Any public commentary?
No.
None? Discussion items? None? This would be a pretty quick meeting. Rose, would you like to read the consent agenda items for us, please?
A, approved minutes of city council meeting minutes on November tenth of two thousand and twenty-five. B, approved minutes of the committee of the whole budget workshop, November seventeen of two thousand and twenty-five. C, approved payroll, October twenty-seventh through April, or November ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. D, approved payment registers, November tenth, November tenth with R M U, and November seventeen of two thousand and twenty-five. E, except in place on file, October financials. F, establish December eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, as two thousand and twenty-six budget public hearing. G, approve, amend, two thousand and twenty-six meeting dates. Are there any items you wish to remove?
Council members, changes or anything you'd like to discuss before we vote? I noticed just for the general public, there was one meeting added last year. We did not have a first meeting in January, but this year there will be. So if you're following the council meetings, there will be a first meeting in January on the second Monday of January. Okay, anything further? I'll entertain a motion.
I move consent agenda items A through G, B, to be approved by omnibus vote as recommended.
Motion by Councilmember Tom McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ben Valdivieso. Any further discussion? Roll call when you're ready.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
I apologize, I had one more thing that I wanted to mention in the mayor's report. And I'm sure I speak for the entire city council. I just want to say thank you for the turnout we had at the Two Ton Food Drive. It was absolutely amazing. The donations, both monetary and food-wise, were incredible. And I want to, I would thank Rosie, came down when the check was presented, but all the folks throughout our community, I mean, that's what this town is all about. And when people need help, they seem to step up and do it. So I just want to thank everybody for all that they did for the Two Ton Food Drive. Okay, now I'm really done. We'll move on to item number two and entertain a motion.
I move resolution R two thousand and twenty-five dash fifty-two, a resolution establishing the Small Business Interior Improvement Grant Program be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Kate Shawdicki, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dan McDermott. Michelle, you're up.
Mayor, council, this is just a resolution establishing the program that we spoke about last week, the Small Business Interior Program. Like the facade grant, we want to help those small businesses in our downtown to do some interior work. We'll structure it as we do the facade. Come in, first come, first served, when the money's spent and then it's gone, and then hopefully we'll do it again next year.
Just a quick question, and I should have asked this before. It says with a maximum amount of ten thousand, that would be the project amount, right?
That would be right, yeah.
Not the city's portion?
No, that would be the city's portion, so a maximum of ten thousand dollars.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got thirty thousand, we could potentially help three businesses. When you get into HVAC and plumbing and all those ADA compliance stuff, they can get pretty expensive. Now, if we have a business that just comes along and they only need five thousand, then we could potentially help more.
Wow, that's awesome. Great way to help our local businesses. Once again, we saw that during the pandemic, and we're still trying to do stuff to help them, so. And a lot of them haven't really bounced back a hundred percent yet from the pandemic, so, great program. Questions, council members?
So this would be for two thousand and twenty-six, so it would start in January?
Yes, ma'am.
And so for any business that's interested, they contact you, they go to the city's website?
Yep, as soon as we get a yes, yes, and a yes, we'll make sure that this is uploaded. We won't have an application out there until January first, but we'll give them the map and a list of eligible expenses that they can, you know, utilize. And then, once January rolls around, we'll have that application ready. I've had two businesses already reach out and say, I'm really interested and excited about being able to use this program, so, yep.
Awesome, thank you, Michelle.
Of course.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a, is there, and I don't know if it'll be in the final documents, but do they have to start that within a certain period? If they apply in January?
Yeah, so...
Complete it by a certain amount of time?
Yes, yes, so within that application, they have stipulations. We run all the forms by our city attorney, so they'll have to complete that, they'll have to be approved prior to the work is being completed, just like the facade.
Okay, awesome, great program. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we got a motion, a second on the floor, roll call, Rose, whenever you're ready.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Thank you, Michelle. Entertain a motion for the issue regarding Illinois Municipal League.
I move resolution R two thousand and twenty-five dash fifty-three, a resolution approving two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six risk assurance through the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Ben Valdivieso, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kate Shawdicki. Brett, you're up.
Thank you, mayor and council members. This evening, I'm here to present business items three through six, and will do my best to briefly highlight the most important aspects of each. Noting item number three, the resolution that was just discussed, I am recommending the city obtain coverage for the twenty-five, twenty-six risk insurance and workers' compensation programs through the Illinois Municipal League and worker, through the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association. The reason for this include that R M A has secured both liability and property coverage for the city's property generating, for the city's power generating assets. The liability, the cyber liability coverage included in R M A's risk package will be in excess of our current carriers' limits, providing the city with more robust cyber coverage. And lastly, the city will realize an eighteen percent decrease in our risk insurance premium from last renewal by utilizing R M A's min-max risk sharing option, providing the city the opportunity to share in the results of our claims experience. By choosing this option, the city will pay R M A the minimum premium of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. If our losses were to exceed the minimum loss fund of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars, the city would be responsible for funding all losses up to the maximum loss fund amount of nine hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars, resulting in a difference of three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which would be set aside in a loss reserve fund that could gain interest. This appears to be the best option, as the city would have realized an overall savings of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, based on our claims history in the previous five years. Considering this, I am asking you to accept the resolution approving the twenty-five, twenty-six risk insurance renewal package that's been presented to you.
Okay. Questions?
No, I'm sure this is a lot of work to go through these renewals, so anything that kind of helps us and saves us, I think, is a fantastic thing, especially when we're talking insurance renewals, as we all probably know how that environment is right now, so great job.
Ready, ups?
Certainly can't question your legwork.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Brett, for all your work. You're going to be up here with us for a couple, three of these, so. We got a motion, a second on the floor, roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott? And Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Next, entertain a motion for item number four relative to the execution of Illinois Municipal League Risk Management.
I move ordinance twenty-two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-four, an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association Minimum-Maximum-Premium Agreement be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Dan McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bill Hayes. You're up again.
Thank you. Given the reasons stated in the previous resolution that you just passed, I am asking that you accept the ordinance to approve the minimum-maximum-premium agreement between the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association and the city of Rochelle. Asking this because this is our requirement, I'm sorry, asking this because this is the option that we are asking you to choose for our risk insurance package for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
Okay, questions, comments? Got a motion, a second on the floor, roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Excellent, entertain a motion relative to item number five.
I move ordinance twenty-two thousand and twenty-five dash seven-five, an ordinance approving membership in the Illinois Municipal Risk Management Association and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation contract be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Tom McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bill Hayes. The floor is yours, Brett.
Thank you again. With this, I am asking that you accept the ordinance to approve membership in the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation contract with R M A. This isn't, this is a requirement of R M A's to become members.
Any questions? Roll call when you're ready.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Excellent, entertain a motion for item number six, Public Risk Fund.
I move resolution R two thousand and twenty-five dash five-four, a resolution to withdraw from the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust and the Illinois Public Risk Fund be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Tom McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kate Shawdicki. Last but not least, Brett.
Thank you. Lastly, I am asking that you approve the resolution to withdraw from the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust and the Illinois Public Risk Fund for all of the reasons previously stated.
All right. Roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Brett, thank you very much. You know, the city of Rochelle, I'm not sure how many people realize that in the general public, all the various things that we have going on and where this risk management falls into you and your entire staff that works on this, good job, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we'll move on to item number seven.
I move ordinance twenty-two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-six, an ordinance amending section four of chapter six to strike limitations on the sale of alcoholic beverages on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Dan McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Tom McDermott. Rose, you're up.
The proposed ordinance would amend section six dash four of the Rochelle Municipal Code to remove the existing restrictions on the sale of alcohol beverages on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Under the current code, alcohol sales must end at seven P M. on December twenty-fourth, and all establishments must remain, remain closed for alcohol sales throughout December twenty-fifth. The amendment strikes these holiday-specific limitations, allowing establishments to operate under their regular permitted hours for both, on both days. The change is intended to modernize the city's liquor regulations, provide consistency for local businesses, and maintain compliance with the Illinois Liquor Control Act. So the recommendation is to approve the ordinance amending section four of chapter six to strike limitations on the sale of alcoholic beverages on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Okay. Questions, comments? I think what started this was a letter from the tavern owners that like to do, I know there's a couple of them that have done like turkey things for people on Thanksgiving, but they wanted to do the same thing on Christmas that, where people don't have a place to go. And I know they're doing this in other towns, and I think it's only fair to our local businesses that they're allowed to do it here, is my opinion, just my opinion. Council, comments?
I, it's just one of those things that, as sadly as it may be, there are people that that is their family, you know, and I don't, I don't think that part of one day and another day make a big difference on people's habits. So if it gives somebody a chance to be around people that care about them, that's, I'm in, so. I think, I think it also could possibly keep some people from driving out of town because there'd be locations just within short driving distance that they could go to, that are going to be open on those days, so hopefully keep some people off the road too.
Good point. Dan, Kate, anything? Okay. Ben, anything?
No, sir.
All right, you got a motion, a second on the floor, roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Excuse me. Next, we'll entertain a motion for item number eight.
I move ordinance twenty-two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-seven, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source series two thousand and twenty-six of the city of Rochelle, Ogden Lee Counties, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one million, five hundred thousand, for the purpose of financing various technology center and related improvements within the city and paying for costs related thereto be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Ben Valdivieso, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Councilmember Dan McDermott. Pat, you're up, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. So what we're looking at with the alternate revenue source here is to be able to do upgrades to the electric system at the tech center. We have multiple redundant feeds coming into the building that provide us power, but inside the facility, we have a single power distribution unit and battery backup that was identified by some potential customers as a reason not to come and lease space from us. So we're looking at updating some of that equipment to make us more available to other people. The building is fifteen-ish years old, I believe, so some of the equipment that we have in the battery section is getting close to end of life. So this is just a way for us to generate revenue, to be able to do that, to be able to get those without going in the hole. We've done a good job, I feel, of getting us out of the hole that we were in less than eight years ago. And these payments are going to be made from the customers that we have. This is not a tax-based payback, so. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, this is strictly to upgrade the city of Rochelle's tech center, has nothing to do...
Right.
...with the one that is...
Nothing.
Well, I don't want somebody to say, oh, look, if they just put one point five million...
This is, this is one hundred percent things that are going to be located at nine-ten Technology Parkway.
I just wanted that expressed, thank you, sir.
I appreciate that.
This is, this is all, this is also just the parameters ordinance, so we're not actually issuing the bonds yet. There'll be a public hearing, I believe, at the next council meeting. And then the reason we have to meet in January is we have another ordinance to approve, so we still have to call, go through a rating with S and P, and we have to meet all these parameters set in this ordinance, and if anything falls outside the parameters, we don't issue the debt. So I just want to reiterate, this is, we're not actually issuing debt tonight, this is just establishing the parameters for us to investigate.
Thanks, Jeff.
And this project is desperately needed.
Okay. And that's, that, the one point five is the maximum, we may not use all that.
Yes, sir. So if the project, you know, if we go out to bid and the project comes in at eight hundred thousand, then that's all we're going to do, we're not going to...
Okay.
Not going to spend frivolously.
No.
All right, thank you, Pat. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Motion, a second on the floor, roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrows.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next, we'll entertain a motion for item number nine relative to the Rochelle Municipal Report.
I move ordinance twenty-two thousand and twenty-five dash seven-eight, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source series two thousand and twenty-six of the city of Rochelle, Ogden Lee Counties, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed three million, five hundred thousand dollars, for the purpose of financing various Rochelle Municipal Airport and related improvements and paying for the costs related thereto be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Tom McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ben Valdivieso. Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is part of the same bond that Pat's talking about. And so what, the airport, on the airport end, we're looking at constructing a new hangar. Altogether, the hangar project is one million, nine hundred, two thousand, six hundred, ninety-seven dollars. And we've been working on this for about a year now, and we are asking for these funds to just, you know, so we can use the other funds available at the airport for daily operations and that. But, so this would include the, the foundation, the hangar itself, construction, everything, so that's, you know, the, the whole project altogether, so. Otherwise, it's the, the same, same thing as what Pat has.
Okay. Is this, this is in addition to any hangar we have?
So, yeah, so the last hangar we built was a community hangar, this is going to be another T-hanger.
Okay.
And this will be located right just to the south of, as you're pulling into the entrance right now. If you're, on the west side is Hangar E, and on the other, on the east side of the drive is a community hangar. So this one will be located just in front or to the south of Hangar E, which is also a T-hanger. And it'll be an eight-unit hangar.
So, so that, is this something we have to go out for bid on, or is...
We did, and, oh, it's, I think at the next council meeting, we'll be approving, hopefully with Brun's Construction was the little bit. The reason it's taken so long is the bids did come in higher than we anticipated, so we were trying to find way, that's how the bond, the whole idea of the bonds came up. But, yeah, the bid will be approved at the next meeting, and then I, what's the dollar amount for the grant? Is it a million-dollar grant?
So the, the grant, we'll have about one point two million dollars in grant funding to pay for it, which, but this is one of those where the city has to come up with these funds first to pay for it, and then we'll be reimbursed one point two million dollars, you know, over probably about two years or so, or a little bit longer.
Very similar to the large car, when we purchased that, we had all the upfront expenses, and we did the interfund loan through the landfill fund, when we received the federal dollars and we paid the landfill fund back plus interest. This will be very similar, when we receive all of the grant dollars, we'll use them to pay the debt service. And then, in a couple of years, when the community hangar's paid off, we have about a five or a six cent tax levy that we use to pay that debt service, we'll just essentially use that to pay any remaining balance.
And this will, this will be an all-steel hangar. You know, rent-wise, it, it will take some time to pay a new hangar off. Obviously, it's very expensive, but not only will this, you know, will we be getting additional revenue from, from the hangar itself, but this will also, you know, give us more airplanes on the field, which will be purchasing more fuel and, you know, more airport operations from takeoffs and landings, that's all grant dollars that, that, once, you know, once those numbers are, are added up throughout the year, it's, that all adds up to grant dollars.
So once you're done with all this, will, will you do some kind of a rate study? Obviously, this hangar's going to be worth more than the ones that have the doors that don't seal and...
Yeah, so we actually had a rate study done last year, hangar rent, and then so this one, we'll, we'll get another one, but, yeah, we, we are trying to keep up with those numbers, keep everything in line.
Happy to see us do it, I think, I think it's, it's been needed, and now the dollars are right to do it. I think we've got a great little airport.
And, I mean, and really, these hangers, we, we have, the oldest hangers out there right now were built in nineteen sixty-four, so they, and those are wood frame hangers, so these will last a long time, and, well, so we'll be generating revenue for a very long time.
Bill?
Do we have, still have a waiting list for hangers?
We have fifteen planes right now on a waiting list to fill this hangar.
Oh.
So we'll build this hangar, and then we'll still have a waiting list.
That's a good position to be in.
Yeah.
Okay.
What came to the conclusion to just have an eight plane hangar instead of something bigger, is that, I don't know the fundamentals that go into it, so...
So, really, just funding the, the cost and everything. The location where we're putting it, actually, once the, once the cost came in, we're like, oh, boy, maybe we should have gone for a six-unit hangar. we're like, oh, boy, maybe we should have gone for a six-unit hangar. But we, we could, I mean, I, I don't honestly know how big hangars get, but we're?
Eight fits the budget?
Yeah.
See, it seems to me 15 would be a nice number. They're already all.
Well, and, and to be honest with you, I mean, we, we thought with the eight-unit hangar, we would have close to the amount of money needed with the grant funding coming in, that's really kind of how we base the eight.
Okay.
But then that came in over higher, over what we expected, so.
Gotcha, okay.
So with this hangar, then, is that, is it, is there a restriction or limitation? Could you add on to it, or is, is the space just big enough for that?
I don't, I mean, I suppose there is a chance that you could add on to it, but the location where we're putting this one, I mean, we're, we're pretty much going to be full.
Okay.
With that, you know, as far as going any further.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything else? Dan, Kate?
I think sometimes, I especially appreciate your comments before, but I think sometimes people see that we issue, we do this alternate revenue and we do the bond debt, and it's because we can't afford to do the projects we're doing, when really the truth is, sometimes it's the most efficient way and effective way to, to get things done, costs keep going up, so the more we can do now, and anytime we do this, there's a structured method of paying that off that doesn't impact other things, so I just wanted to add that for anybody watching at home who might question why we're doing what we're doing.
It's actually, we've done that on those sewer lining projects and some of that, where it's, it's hedging against the inflation.
Well, a, a great example would be when we issued 19 million dollars in alternate revenue bonds to fund two substations and distribution upgrades with an average coupon rate of 2%. And so, then we did that during the, right before, I think, or right after COVID, so the rates were really good, but as you all have seen, the cost for that infrastructure has gone up, and so have lead times, so it made sense to issue the, the debt, and it didn't affect the ratepayers. I mean, it did, and, but, it did because they're paying it, but it didn't because we're not raising rates, you know, we didn't have to have a rate increase to pay for it. So we have bonds that are going to be paid off in, I think, 2028. Several of you were here when we issued the bonds to do the street work, and it was like, I don't remember, 4.8 million. We did a very short issuance, it was an eight-year window, and that'll be paid off, and we'll have all of that work that was done in one, one and a half years at an interest rate of like 3%. So it was, it was very well worth it, and we dedicated our non-home rail sales tax to make those payments.
And it's much easier to cash flow payment than it is fighting an extra 2.5 million dollars for?
I, I agree. That, I mean, we do it with the, our dump, our, I call them dump trucks, but the axles, the, the snowplow trucks that we have, I mean, we, we go out and borrow a half a million every two or three years and make the payments, because it's easier to, to fit that in your budget, and it ensures we stay on a, a rotation to change out our vehicles every four to five years, so I think after 20 years, your fleet has been changed over.
Okay, that's awesome. Anything else, council members?
Community hangar looks good these days.
Looks very good.
Pretty fancy out there.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, get a motion, a second on the floor, Rose, whenever you're ready.
Councilor Shawdicki?
Yes.
Councilor Valdebiasso?
Yes.
Councilor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrows?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote six zero.
Thank you.
Next, we'll entertain a motion for item number 10 relative to the contents of the executive session minutes.
I move the council to, to accept the content, to accept the contents of the executive session minutes from 8:11, 2025, 8:25, 2025, 9:08, 2025, and 9:22, 2025, with the understanding that these minutes will remain confidential.